Contractings roof work at the cultural center that we approved in the last fiscal year that was conducted in this fiscal year in October. We paid for that with the general fund check, not an ARPA check. So we're asking to replenish the general fund with that forty thousand that we'd earmarked from ARPA. And then I'm asking for a transfer of twenty five thousand dollars from the general fund to the rainy day fund, which is what we had budgeted in our, in our budget originally to transfer at the end of the year if we had the funds and I, I think we do. So I think that that's, that's my financial report and my request for, for transfers and I'd ask for you to approve those.
Does council have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of funds item one, two, three, and four.
I'll move to approve.
There are second.
Oh, sir.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, street department report.
You're all packed and sitting there. I mean, the reports in your bag, I'm sorry. Just letting you know that I, I look at see what we've all done here. You guys have been very busy. And they are working very, very hard. Trying to keep up with some of the streets and the potholes and stuff. I just want to give them a big parade that they've been working very hard. The other thing is, um, we have been doing a little bit, I don't know. Well, speaking on the back of the day, we have been doing a little bit of cross training and stuff. We started with some of our gentlemen. Working with the sanitary board, trying to get the electrician out of, help out of powder. He graduated from the high school. We'll be working with them also. Kind of to learn some of the pumps. That'll give those guys a little relief also. And we are trying to train on some of their, their equipment as well as they are training on some of ours. We have been working very well together. Other than that, that's all I have.
Questions for Mike? Hey, thank you. Next, police department.
I know you see the two quarters sitting down in the north and east end. I spoke with them on Friday. We received a couple of hours or so, everything's going on every quarter day, hoping that it's all there now.
And it has been a full noon without saying one. I know, I know.
Any questions for Chief Fozzie?
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, next, fire department report.
I don't really have much extra. We did have another fire Saturday and another vacant structure. Everything Marty didn't do when he gets vacant structure down, definitely continue to help us because it seems like all the fires we've battled have been in a vacant structure.
Where was, where was that fire?
Thirty seven Wright Street. It's in the middle of the afternoon. It's like at twelve fifteen, twelve thirty on Saturday afternoon. Another vacant structure. We definitely need to continue to get them pulled in.
Thank you. No insurance, right?
Hey, thank you, Chief Saddle. Next, uh, building code zoning.
Just one thing I wanted to add on there. I do have three more demolition contracts down at DEP right now. And as soon as they give me the green light, then we can get those scheduled. So hopefully I'll get that here real soon. They've had it since last week.
Is the contractors? Are they at an idle right now then until we, until we get those?
Oh, they're what? I'm sorry.
At an idle?
No, they, they got jobs over places they're working too, but they'll, they'll drop on these pretty quick. Once, once we get that. And I did send in a request for some reimbursement, about forty six or forty seven thousand in reimbursement for the ones that we've done. And of course, the PK back said they want a couple of things tweaked on it. So I've got to, I got to rewrite a couple of pages for them. Hopefully we'll get some of that money back soon.
Have we already paid that, those bills we have, haven't we?
We're still retaining five percent, like the contract said, but most of the bills have been paid. We, we, um.
So those are reflective right now in our current bank statement says paid. I'm guessing. When do we pay? Joe, I'm looking at you, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think there's one ways to manage themselves, Carl.
Okay.
Questions for Marty?
I got one. On item number four. In removing transits from vacant properties and lots. Would any of those be associated with the property on the corner of Bank and Main? Cause they're having a lot of problems with people showering, sleeping in the hallways, things of that nature.
Now, Mike, Mike and I have been working together. He's being a reporter if I get.
You're aware of those problems then?
Wasn't in, in, in Thomasville.
I just thought I'd bring those to your attention if you hadn't heard about it. All right, thank you.
I haven't heard about it either.
Well, you're getting up to speed. Keep getting the same circles I'm in.
That's not even your word.
I know. Just trying to make it all better.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate it. Next, city attorneys report. Thank you, Marty.
We had a couple, um, in a couple of cases in municipal court on Thursday. It went rather well. We're my, my ultimate goal is to try to get some kind of, I don't know if teeth is the right word, but some kind of respect or some kind of, if it needs to be teeth, teeth, but something where people will understand that you just don't get a ticket and not show up. And you just don't get a ticket and not come to court. There's penalties for that. And so we had a couple of people come in Thursday. And things went well and the judge made, made his decisions and I think we're, I think we got off to a good, a good start there, if you will. And I think, well, we'll, we'll talk about it here in a little bit. The ordinance, the ordinance coming up and helping the judge. Giving, giving the court more tools to, to get people to attend court is, is going to be super helpful in my opinion.
Thank you.
Other than that, everything else I do is kind of mixed in with all this stuff.
Okay. Uh, you also have the May city clerks report with six business licenses listed for the month.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome. And city managers report.
Before I jump into my details, I just want to give a pat on the back to the clerk, Judy Piercey. She's not only doing all of her clerk duties and helping out with municipal court, but you know, with the election this month, she's put in extra time on the weekends and just a lot of juggling. And she's, she's coming out as Miss America through it all. So, uh, really appreciate you, Judy, doing all that. Um, and she didn't pay me to say that. Okay. I'll just say, you know, I mentioned already Suzie retired. We spent a lot of this month working with her to try to figure out, you know, to get things to where we could absorb that blow the best we could. Um, we've had a few annexation conversations. And that will continue to work. I don't know if there's any, you make any headway today on your end, mayor?
I was circled around to the local store four times. So the last time I said, may I speak with your attorney regarding annexation? So they put me through, gave me a confirmation number. Uh, sent me to their marketing department. I have a name attached with that and a promise to contact us within two days.
Okay. So there's where we stand. Um, first due fire, still on my dock of things to do. I'm, I'm working on essentially building a, uh, a database or, and that sounds really, um, like it's a lot, but it's not. We've already got the data present, but at least screening that out, cleaning the data up so that we can compare square footage is just to, to a, a flat fee. Yeah. If we were going to use commercial properties like many municipalities do, they charge a nickel or whatever that is per square foot for a fire fee. So that's something I'm trying to get the data for and be able to present to you guys next. Had a lot of personnel stuff. Um, we've worked, I think, really well sanitary board last month on, on combining forces in some form or capacity. And so that's, that's been helpful and building some synergy between two, two groups there. Uh, Carp Festival has taken a lot of, a lot of time in the past, uh, month, and that's going to be this weekend. So invite everybody to attend. We'll be five to nine on, um, Friday night. And then, uh, essentially we're, the festivities will start about eight o'clock on Saturday, but most of the, of the stuff that's going to be public, public face, it's not an individual event. We'll start at noon and go from noon to four. Um, so if you're around, need something to do, come to the Carp Festival.
A pancake dinner. What time is that start?
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Eight, that's.
Yeah. So we're going to.
At the glass museum.
I could run down through the list of events, but I won't. But yeah, there will be a pancake breakfast, we think, at the glass museum, eight o'clock. And it should be free. We're going to, we're actually trying to raise some donations, we think, for the library is our, our goal there. So that's, that's the gist of that. Um, budgets. So we're going to do some budgets work tonight. We have to have our revised budget for the end of the year and by June fifteenth. So hopefully that gets approved tonight and we can submit that. And then obviously July one starts our new fiscal year budget and we'll have to have that revision done, I think somewhere by the end of the July. The call revision, I think, ha- happened, happens in the middle, but hopefully we can have that ready to go essentially July one. Um, depending on how the, how the meeting date falls. And then I think lastly, I'll just make mention, we may have to have a special meeting for no other reason this month to, to approve our insurance proposal. Um, that came in today from West Virginia Corps. So didn't make this, didn't make this meeting, but, um, we need to have that approved by July one as well. So, um, I didn't get a chance to compare the prices. Joe, did you get a look, chance to look at that? Nah. So, um, we'll take a look at that and get back to you all, set up a meeting, get that approved.
Any questions?
Are we on the cameras and guardrails?
Um, cameras, there was a meeting today. I didn't get to attend it. I had some personnel stuff I had to take care of, but, um, my understanding is, is that there's a substitute climber and I'm trying to confirm dates. And then they'll be ready to climb and hang the equipment. Um, guardrails, we've finally got our contractor to negotiate the prices down. One, one of our smaller projects got axed. So we're down to three projects under that ten thousand dollars at this point. Um, that will include the mid avenue project and I called the day to try to get an update on when they're going to be here. But I did speak to him last week and they were trying to move us to the top as quick as they, quickly as they could. So that's where we stand.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think just, just a cursory conversation, J J Jordan from Department of Highways did reach out today about putting, um, some no uh, truck or local traffic only signs, I think, on the both ends of mid avenue. And they were going to assist us in that. I think they had the signs available. And I think we're going to do it, right, Mike? Okay. Make them our order room or something. Yeah. And so we'll try to stick those up. So.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there a motion from council to accept all of the department reports?
I'll move to approve.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under old business, update employee vacation handbook policy section. This will be a second reading.
This isn't an ordinance, so there isn't a second reading, but I think this is our third or fourth attempt, but nobody's.
Okay.
Um, at this point, I think we're, I got some comments back from council at last meeting that we wanted to move to a system where vacation was awarded on anniversary dates. And so I pretty much nixed everything where that had to do with January first in the vacation policy and moved everything to anniversary dates. And I have no issues with that. Um, I think the only con, as we discussed last time, was payroll that we'd have to look every time to make sure somebody wasn't getting some vacation. But, um, we've discussed that and we don't have an issue. So at this point, I'd recommend that the vacation policy be adopted as written.
And what changes are, are being made? Actually, it's forty hours per year now.
I, I don't, uh, forty hours is what you can roll over at the end of the year. And that can carry over to the next year. And so we've clarified at that point that you can have two hundred hours total. You're forty plus if you've been here long, long enough, a hundred and sixty. In addition to that, so you can have two hundred total in your bank. So nothing has changed in regards to that. It was mainly when do you get those vacation days allotted to your, your.
And it's on your anniversary date now.
On your anniversary date, yeah, which takes care of our end of year and beginning of year. Guilteens. Thanks, Herb. Okay.
Would you like to make a motion to accept if you're comfortable with it?
Yes, maybe. I'm amazed that we accept the update. When the employee vacation ends up. Including the employee vacations and the policy. January one to anniversary day on all vacation.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
I just want to make a note, Joe, let's try to get this updated tomorrow before we hit the payroll. Once we hit the payroll button, we can't update it till the next payroll. So we've got to make sure we update this before we hit that button. I didn't want to forget that. But we'll try to get that established and everybody right by this, this week. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. No, that will be banked. So all, as of the end of twenty twenty, whatever vacation time you had that you were not paid out for, because some people elected to get paid out during that confusion in the policy. That time will be banked in an account that will not accrue any further. You'll still be able to use it. Yeah. I think, I think we should. Well, we'll try to update it and we'll keep track of that and we'll bring that back to council and try to decide that if that's okay.
I thought that, that, that there's a provision of about employees after a certain date. And I thought you fell in the old, under the old handbook and the vacation time. I understand what you're saying.
And didn't, didn't use it there in that time period. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think moving forward, you're not going to be able to carry over more than forty hours per year, but anything in, in the rears, it will have to be reimbursed.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll get you some numbers next meeting and, and make sure council signs off on that and we can get that resolved. Right?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the updated, um, vacation in the employee handbook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, creating penalties for failure to appear in Weston Municipal Court. Second reading. Is there a motion to have the second reading by title only?
I move to have these second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, penalties for failure to appear in Weston Municipal Court.
There are second. Thank you, Randy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, penalties for failure to appear in Weston Municipal Court. Second reading by title only.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten?
I'll move to approve.
There are second? Okay. It's been moved in second. We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Yes.
Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Okay, motion carries. Next, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, related to nuisance dogs that creates a separate fee. This would be the second reading. And I'm looking for a motion to have the second reading by title only.
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three eleven. Ordinance related to nuisance dogs that creates a separate fee schedule within the city's onsite citation program by title only.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, ordinance related to nuisance dogs that creates a separate fee schedule within the city's onsite citation program.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll move to approve the second reading.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen. Councilman Herb Curtis.
Okay, motion carries. Next, schedule within the city's onsite citation program.
No, 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 I think D C was supposed to collide with D in the, creates a separate fee schedule within the city's onsite citation program.
Same, okay. All right, next, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Ordinance for citizen petition to Weston Municipal Court to address barking and nuisance dogs. This would be the second reading.
I'll move to have the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve, citizen petition to Weston Municipal Court to address parking dogs and nuisance dogs by title only.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve, citizen petition to Weston Municipal Court to address barking dogs and nuisance. Barking and nuisance dogs. Second reading by title only.
Is there a motion to accept the second reading?
I move to accept.
It's been moved in second to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve. We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Yes.
Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Okay, motion carries. And I'd like to mention that these ordinances are available at the city building in case anyone would like a copy of those at any time.
I'll do my best to get them on the website this week too. It's been a while. I've updated, but maybe you can get on there.
I'm going to give Brenda one, one of my copies.
Okay, next, City of Weston facade grant program approval and request of fifty thousand ARPA dollars, ARPA funds for startup.
The fifty thousand dollar number came from the city manager. I think that's just discussions we've had from our ARPA allocation that we felt that that would be something that would give them some bang to be able to do some projects with, but also, um, yeah, limit, I guess, the damage to the ARPA funds for lack of a better word, but I'm, I'm in full agreement with it. So don't, don't feel like there's any pressure on my side not to go with that number.
I know that councilwoman Gump had mentioned, did we put a, a dollar amount on this up to the previous one that we had, um, said up to ten thousand dollars? That, that was a typo. Um, we had discussed up to five thousand dollars for the grant. And then al- also another, um, suggestion was up to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred rather as a match. Um, I don't know if you guys have done any home renovations lately, but twenty-five hundred dollars doesn't really go very far. So also by creating our own facade grant program, um, we will be eligible for additional grant monies. We have in the past applied for grant facade grants. We, and we are not successful. One of the first questions they ask you is if you have an existing facade grant program. So we're hoping that if we show, um, that we are sincerely interested and ready to invest in our own facade grant program, that we will be able to in the future, secure some grant funding.
Really, the large question, I guess it limbs in my mind is how does the transaction, I guess, occur? Are we transferring this, if we prove any funds from ARPA, will we transfer that directly to HLC to their bank account? Or is that something the city is going to hold and reserve? To me, I, I don't know necessarily that if, if council, council's getting to view the program, which I think is fine. But I don't, it's not really councils to administer. It'll be HLC's program. And at that point, I think their parameters can be whatever HLC determines that those parameters to be. It'll just be a funding question for council, whether they want to fund it or not. Does that make sense to you? And I don't think HLC is going to put the, put the packet together and say, hey, this is what we're doing, then, then change it. But I just want that to kind of, we've never done this before, right? So we're trying to tease out how this relationship should work. And so my feeling is, is long-term, I want to get to the point where, you know, if we're going to have this program, whether it's ten thousand, twenty thousand, whatever it is, a year that we could scrape together to, to do facade grants. Let's get that over to HLC and let them administer those funds, maybe under the purview down the line of the finance manager or whatnot, to be able to make sure things are done properly under city's financial policies. But my feeling is, is let's get this money not in the general fund. Let's give it to HLC for them to manage is what I, I think we, is the proper course down the line. So that's, that's really only the last remaining question I have in my mind and however council decides they want to proceed, I'm, I'm fine with that.
This gets approved tonight, then you could have that on the agenda for the next meeting to transfer monies.
Okay.
And also I think that maybe since it is the first time that we've done something like this, maybe perhaps for the first year, we, we should, um, have HLC come and council approve those funds.
It's, it's up to you. I.
And so everyone feels more comfortable and.
I think you can put it under the finance manager's approval. And I think what I would do is I would just say, hey, allocate these funds. We can figure out how we want to do that between now and the next meeting, like the mayor's suggestion. And then we can sit down with HLC and say, hey, we're going to need three receipts and a, and, and whatever else we need, right?
And a report.
Yeah, and a report and those kinds of things. And I think that that would be enough. We don't need to um, tax HLC any bit, any worse, right? Make their work any harder. We can just figure out that process and run it like another city program. It's, it's.
So is council ready to take action?
Randy, you had some concerns last time. Did you get your questions answered?
No, I guess.
Good, rude, Rick.
Yeah. You had some questions about how it was to be determined which properties.
Appears to me that the historic commission is going to be in charge of it. So all we got to do is give them the money.
Okay.
So that's who's in charge. So if there's any concerns, I'll have to speak with them.
Okay. All right. But I think that you were concerned last time about the scoring and, and they included that.
It's not an issue. They're in charge of it.
Okay.
Then something to stop for additional grant funding as they mentioned before.
Did you want to think about it longer? Work out some other.
Fifty thousands a lot, just starting it out. Not that I'm against the program, but or them having money or, or any of that. I just imply a lot. That I'm trying to get my head around it.
I just picked the number out of the air, honestly.
Yeah.
Small amount compared to cameras though, if you look at it and numbers.
Yeah.
I would like for everyone to feel comfortable with it before we proceed.
Can you change the amount? You still work now?
You can make a motion for whatever amount you would like.
I mean, upon discussion, the city manager just.
At this point, I, I, I was just making a recommendation. I've taken a look at the ARPA numbers and kind of forecast. And I think I've provided that to council at some point, hopefully in the email, kind of what I was laying out. And those are all subject to change on your guys' decision, but I think we can weather it with fifty thousand. I'd like to see the, see the program get off the ground. I think it's something to be beneficial and, and honestly, I'd like to see it attract people to be part of HLC and say, we're doing some, some worthwhile projects. So that's my thinking with it. But you guys decide what it should work.
I think the goal is to be able to get people like, help, help citizens improve their property value.
Agreed.
Whatever you're comfortable with, Councilman Curtis, I'll be glad to take the rest of it in beautification. Well, and you know what? Here's the thing. We have no idea how many, how many residents will want to participate in this. We don't know if they'll have absolutely no interest or if. We don't know if they'll have absolutely no interest, or if the floodgates are gonna open, you know?
If you'd like to put that in the form of a motion, we'll see where it goes. You'll get hate mail from Sherri, but other than that.
No, that's, did he say thirty thousand? Says twenty thousand for beautification. I'm good. Sure. How it would work, it would be a, a matching grant that residents, um, they need to submit their project. And also, this is, is a reimbursement grant, so they would have to apply and, and if they are eligible to receive that grant and their projects qualify to receive that grant, they would give us a dollar amount. But then after the project is completed and they would have a time limit to complete this project, then after their project is completed, they, they submit their total receipts. And they're reimbursed for half, up to five thousand dollars. So, if someone wanted to paint their porch and it was five hundred dollars to paint their porch, they submit that receipt, they could get two hundred and fifty dollars back. So there's no bottom limit on this grant. If you wanted to pour your sidewalks, if you wanted to, it's hard landscaping, like sidewalk steps. Make your home more attractive and appealing. Paint the house up to five thousand dollars. I mean, you could essentially roof some of these homes and dry them in.
Is our intention to have multiple funding cycles in a year or one, one application per year? Has that been discussed at all?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the way I read it and understood it, it's, it's one time per year.
Once a year, okay.
And of course, that, we would try to get that in ample time for folks to start in this, in the spring with springtime projects.
If we did this now, or is, is HLC prepared to do the grant in this, this year at all?
What do you think, Kim? Like July one fiscal year? I think they are. I think they are ready to roll.
What if we? I'm just trying to split the baby here Solomon style. What if we asked for twenty-five thousand dollars initially, and let's do July to December, and then we had a second cycle that we'd open up from December to June of next year, barring everything goes well.
So then if it, if it didn't work?
Yep.
So a happy year cycle.
Happy year. So in other words, you would be approving twenty-five thousand.
Better now.
Yeah, if it doesn't, if it doesn't go well.
If it doesn't go well, we know.
We need the funds for something else. We have the funds there.
It's okay.
I'm good with that. Sounds good to me.
Like make a motion? Entertaining motion to approve the facade grant program and a request of twenty-five thousand dollars from ARPA funds for a six month startup. Are you okay with making that motion, Councilman Curtis? Okay. All right. Is there a second?
There's a second allowed discussion.
Yeah.
After.
Yeah.
My second.
Okay. Go ahead, discussion.
Discussion now? My hope would have been that we'd had as much thoughtful and conscious discussion on talking about the land reuse agency. I think it was an important issue that was thrown off to the side without any thought. That's my discussion.
There's been a motion and a second. We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next prioritization of dilapidated buildings.
I had a request, I heard him mention, yeah, I guess, to discuss this again. And that's why it's on the agenda, not trying to dredge up old ghosts or anything like that. But I think there was a request to discuss the properties on High Street. Am I correct there? And where they were on the prioritization and, and how it, it, should we look at, I guess, increasing their priority and getting this properties done? And I'll just run down, I guess, the current status of those Marty or, and, and Brian, feel free to tell me I'm wrong. Those properties, we have a signed agreement with the property owner essentially to waive the twenty day appeal period process, which is already expired as far as the appeal period. I don't think it's really even necessary. Um, we did, he did sign acknowledging that he would be invoiced for, for the teardowns. And then, um, and if he didn't pay that invoice, he'll be placed on his property, which isn't really anything out of the ordinary. Really, that letter was signed to allow us access prior to the twenty uh, day appeal period being expired, which we're past now. My only, I guess, food for thought is that we've met once with council already about the dilapidated property rating sheet, which has been included in your packet. Nothing really has changed with those properties from our determination outside of maybe there's been some vagrants, vacancy um, there, and I, I think this is all up for debate. This is all up for discussion. There's no issues on our end with that. I just I guess I will appeal to council that we've, we've got to make a decision on how we're gonna approach these properties and just continue to try to stick with that the best we can, so that it doesn't feel like we're going different directions all the time. And that's not a warning or scolding or anything of that nature. I just think that's the general nature of, of work. That I think it's, it's, it's important that we provide some clear direction. So um, looking at your, you know, page ninety, ninety-one, on the bottom, we had a proposed city priority path for demolitions. Uh, one was the first properties we were gonna target were properties that are owned by the city, or been signed over by the owner via, via tax sale. We don't have any of those currently in our stock. I think we're working on a Mr. Morrison on High Street. That one's, we're trying to meet with him and have him, he's indicated that he's gonna do that, and I think as soon as that does happen, we'll tee that one up for a demolition. Number two's fire damaged. And so I think just after this weekend, we've got a couple of them out there that has some ownership issues we're trying to work through, and the owners have indicated some kind of level of interest. But we've got this one on Wright Street that maybe wasn't quite at the top of our list now, but now it's fire damaged, and I think we'll move in to get that one bit out and demolish as quickly as possible now. So that's moved up the list. And then three, owner willing to pay for demo. I don't think that that applies to our situation currently as we understand it, then I think we've been indicated that maybe, maybe they'll pay for it, maybe they won't. And then, then number four, our proposed, on the order, order list, as we jump into this property rating sheet and say, let's go highest to lowest. So, and then we'd exclude any properties that the owners are trying to do something, well, we don't have any desire to go in there and tear those down until they've kind of reached the end of their, their abilities. So the ones that are being asked about, I think two fifty-four and two fifty-six High Street were quite, quite low on our priority list. They're on the back sheet here at the bottom. They've got a total score of fifty-eight with our highest scores being, you know, ninety-five, ninety-three. And this is just a, like, again, to rehash this property rating sheet, this is just metrics that we'd stolen from another community to kind of go out and rate and prioritize those structures. So I guess at the end of the day, I'm, it's up to the council's direction about what we do. We've just, we've tried to kind of develop a scientific method for those priorities. And like I said, I think we've met about it and discussed it, and everybody kind of left, left it that we weren't going to prioritize those, those houses on High Street, but um, and this is why, this is where they fell on this priority sheet. So, just wanted to bring everybody up this, up, up to the present day to where we stood. And then I guess entertaining discussion and question answer.
I have a question about the property that I talked to Marty about on, it's West Second, it's actually Wright Street. And the gentleman indicated he wanted to deed that to the city.
Right, you're beside the physical third place. He said that he was gonna consider that. I actually have a subcontractor going to mow it, if I made him notice to mow it, and he didn't do it, tried to consult and have to mow it. And he said that he worked with council about this guy.
We have, we, we just need to set up a time to meet with him and talk to him about it. Okay.
Will that change the priority?
Well.
That becomes city owned?
Yeah, I think it would qualify owned by city, and if it's dilapidated structure, we want to get that down immediately. So that, so that would be one that we would jump to the top of the priority list, because we now own it by my operation. Yeah, correct.
I can't hear her. Do you want to ask? Do you hear something like your back in the next three ounces? Do you want to? Oh. Do you want him to talk about that? Are you sure? Yeah. Okay. We can leave them as they are.
Are you sure? Okay.
Are you sure you don't want to, you know, go talk about the EP and? No.
Okay, so no action then is needed on that.
Yeah, and I, I'll just point out in this these, the metrics on top, you see on the very top, estimated floor area, construction type, utilities, fire damage. These were scores that were given that went with the metric, you know, the rubric that we pulled from another community. View of property, you know, that was basically, can we see it from the main road? That gave it a little bit of a score, an increased score, but if there's something, you know, if you guys feel that there's another metric that we should include, that's all open for discussion, and we can update our list and our priority list. We don't have any issues with that. We've just provided, you know, what we feel is a scientific method, and if you think some concern that was expressed was vagrancy, right, that we had some people getting into those homes and living in them and things of that nature, and that's stuff if we need to, if we have reports of that, we can plywood over the doors and all that other stuff, if we're gonna do that in the interim. Or if we say, you know, want to develop a metric, it's a, you know, we've gotten police reports and stuff like that, and if that's the case, if we need to bump those up the priority list to get rid of them, we could do something like that as well. It's all open for discussion and hash it out. I don't have any issues with it either way. Okay. Thanks, Herb.
Today, now more important than ever, is this science that you're using peer reviewed?
It's completely, uh, in-house.
Okay, that's all I needed to hear.
Next DOH agreements for possible rehabilitation of five city bridges. And I think at our last meeting, Nate, you were gonna put some verbiage together to include.
Yeah, and I think you guys have on page ninety-two, that's the, I was going to make a generic cover letter for all those property or for all those bridges. That covers each one, and I was gonna include that with each agreement. If you guys approve those to be signed tonight, I think it'd be a good thing.
Page was that?
Should be ninety-two. And I'll just read the pertinent parts. It says for the bridges on Center Court Depot and Howe, the city requests the following if rehab to to the extent possible, placement of conduit for the placement of decorative lights by city auspices, accommodation of pedestrian features such as sidewalks, extra wide sidewalks or five foot shoulders. Uh, the connection of existing pedestrian features with any projected work, so I was kind of speaking to the Four Street fiasco where the sidewalks were left unconnected. And then, uh, design review with selected consultant for input before and after the preliminary designs have been completed. I felt that when we had some contentious discussions about what was included or not, that would have been headed off if we'd had some kind of input in the design process. So, I'm not trying to dictate it, but I do think we should be consulted at some point for our bridge and what it's gonna look like. Then I said for Four Street Arch Bridge, it spans the West Fork River. The city wishes to see the bridge inspected for the possibility of preservation. And we recognize that a replacement bridge is being constructed downstream, but would like to see that bridge, see the bridge preserved for local traffic or as a pedestrian bridge and would appreciate inclusion in this program. And I also said the above request would apply to this bridge as well, to the extent practical. Anything I'm missing there?
I don't think so. I just don't think you can express the importance enough of the Fourth Street Arch Bridge. Our involvement in their decision, if they're gonna do anything with that, because there's a historic home right there. It's my understanding, and they were open about that, that when they considered the replacement of the bridge downstream. One of the reasons they decided not to upgrade that one is they would have had to have taken that, that home on the corner.
Okay.
And we sure don't want to see that happen if they're gonna help out with that.
Okay. I'll just spill in, and I don't know when the meeting occurred with Department of Highway, so I've lost track of time, but it was kind of when we, when we approached it with District Seven, they weren't really well aware of how this program was even gonna work. And someone looked it up, and they've got like a state database for bridges. And they said, yeah, that one's slated for full replacement, which we all know is happening right now. So it seemed to me, may have just fallen through the cracks, and I'd be surprised if they even looked at this bridge, but we'll see. And I think we respond to it, so.
I just appreciate you keeping that in mind.
Yeah, so the preservation of the historic home, right?
I'm not, I'm not sure how, uh, everything goes from one to the other, but in my mind, that Depot Street Bridge should have some extra attention if you can get it anywhere through any of this program, because it is, it does supply the traffic flow to a lot of business activity in Weston now, and the How Street Bridge is you, you could actually do without it, without having a big inconvenience. It probably the residents in that area would probably appreciate that bridge being closed, because it would cut down on through traffic.
Okay.
So you might consider whenever doing that and maybe take a survey at the residents on Broad Street, what their thoughts would be about that How Street Bridge not being there versus upgrading the Depot Street Bridge to create a better environment economically for the businesses.
I mean, if that's something, if council would like to, to kind of take a stab at a priority, I don't mind including a line like that. If you said, you know, Depot Street would be our priority for full replacement, I don't have an issue writing that line in here. I think that'd be good feedback from state.
Where is the Howell Street Bridge?
Across from the house that was demoed on West Second.
Oh, I think that's definitely needed.
That's my ward, remember?
I do.
Yeah, I, I think the traffic on that bridge is surprising. I think there's quite a bit of traffic on that bridge.
There's traffic on it, but I would say the residents would approve of not having all that traffic if they could, I mean, that, that bridge only really benefits three or four people on each side of the bridge. The rest, the way you can get there from the other end just as quick. I'm sure it's used a lot, but maybe the residents don't like it being used a lot. It'd be like.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I mean, you just have to ask them.
Well, I'm sure they have studies on traffic flow. We could see that, couldn't we?
Hey, they may not. I don't know. I would think if you got rid of How Street, it's gonna increase the traffic going down Broad Street, back towards the, you know, the Cook and Floe side. So at that point, I would think those, those residents would be saying, our traffic's really increased. I don't like this, but I could be right, could be wrong.
Something to consider.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay, is there a motion to submit the, um, the letter, uh, and our priorities are, are possible request to DOH for the bridge?
And you're authorizing the signing of the agreements for all five bridges, right?
Yes.
One final caveat on those agreements. I caught this breathing through it. I don't know if we both did. There will not, they're requesting no B and O taxes to be levied on the contractor for the construction of these bridges. So I think that's a new provision compared to our, our past agreement.
Otherwise, how are you gonna get them done?
Right. I just thought it was a little heavy handed from the state to come in and tell us how we should be taxing people, but personal opinion there.
Hey, would council like to take action on the DOH agreements?
I'll move to approve.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, appoint interim finance manager Joe Solberg.
I'm recommending that we appoint Joe Solberg to be the interim finance manager, um, to Susie Johnston. Uh, and I guess his term will be until the, the full appointments are made by council, whenever that is. I don't know if that'll be exact, exactly after the election or if you guys.
July.
July, okay, until that July term. And I would ask that you, um, increase his pay to match the finance director's pay that was there previously during that time.
How long had she been here?
Um, I think she was twenty seventeen. Is that right? Seven years, yeah. I don't want to diminish anything she's done, but Jo- Joe's handled a lot more of the day-to-day tasks than she was at, at the end of her term. Uh, that's why I think it's fair.
And she had held that position for how long?
Less than a year. Yeah. Or maybe it was, maybe it was a year roughly, but I forget.
And she had an assistant?
Right.
So what is that salary?
Uh, I think it's forty-six thousand dollars if I remember right. Does that sound right? Joe's shaking his head, yes, he's going to take it, whether it's right or wrong. Yeah.
And that's the current, the same as what Susie was making?
I'm, I'm pretty sure, yeah. And like I said, if you just want to make the motion, does that, it's whatever she's making, well, confirm whatever that is and move forward with that. I'm fine with that. Or if you'd like to set a number, another number, feel free to.
I'll move to approve moving Mr. Solberg into the interim finance director position at the current salary, current salary that the previous finance director was making.
Okay, is there a second?
Is that the forty-six thousand figure?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, final. Congratulations.
Fairness Finance.
He does. He's all over me for submitting receipts, I can tell you that. He's the finance police. Final fiscal year twenty-three budget revision for coal severance and general fund.
Coal severance, we had a lot more revenues than what we projected, so we've bumped those revenues up and we've balanced it by putting it into contingencies. Um, my intentions with, with the rest of the remainder of the year with coal severance is to buy some sidewalk forms, which are less than five thousand dollars. I've got the quotation for those and I'm just waiting to get the budget adjusted to, to make that purchase. And then, um, we've also had a request to, to work, do some sidewalk work, I think at Lively Park, and so if we can get that kind of fired up, I guess, for lack of a better word, before then the fiscal year, we'll do that and we'll use coal severance money to pay for it. And if not, we'll circle the wagons July one and make sure those funds have been included to do some sidewalk work out of coal severance fund.
We also had talked about some sidewalk out Kitten Way, because of the new, new roads going out there, remember?
Yeah.
Before we put that fencing up.
Mm-hmm. And I'm, uh, I think that was a sidewalk we talked about doing with Department of Highways, right, Mike? I don't think that's happening now, right? Yeah, we'll see where the, the road ends up being.
You can do it after it, after the road.
Yeah. Yeah, I think what it would, just I guess to give a little bit more feedback on that, we were given a date to have it done by, and we said that's an impossible date. Well, we've, we've gone, what? Past that date, so. Yeah, Department of Highways, and I think at the last meeting, said at some point this summer, that road's going to get paved, right? It wasn't before.
We still have plenty of time.
Perhaps, you know, or they could show up next week and start paving. I think that that's the kind of.
Now, but.
Yeah.
We could have.
Done it.
I don't know, we, we could have come twice.
But we can do it afterwards.
We'll try. Millington, okay.
Like I said, it was told us it was going to be some time in the week. Ask people.
Yeah, my first of May, I think's what they told us. Yeah. Yeah. So I'd asked to approve the coal, coal budget, and then we've adjusted, um, our general fund budget in the same fashion. I guess two, two critical areas I'll point out, and Joe, feel free to chime in if I'm missing anything. Um, on the revenue side, we had misappropriated, and that's a scary word, I shouldn't say it that way, but we had, we classified some B and O revenue as excise taxes in the, in the, in the past. And so essentially all we've done, i- it is all we've done is we switched those categories and made it balanced the right way and, and let those be represented correctly on our, on our sheet. So that was caught. Um, we did have an increase in sales tax that gave us a little bit more money and then fine fees and court costs, those were, were good. And then, like I said, X, the only decrease we had on the revenue side was that excise tax on utilities. Um, then on the expenditure side, we increased our, we put more money towards sidewalks. And then, um, just in case we decide to do those at the end of the year, we didn't, uh, I don't know how you guys missed this, but when we did the budget, we didn't put any money in there for elections. And so there are real costs of that, and I think we're going to be around a little bit under fifteen thousand dollars for the ballots and all that good stuff and paying the poll workers. And I, it may not even be that much, but we just felt, let's put that number in there so we're safe. And then, um, contingencies, we just increased that to kind of, essentially, we just want to roll that money into next year at this point. So asking for approval for both those budget revisions, coal severance and general fund.
Page are we on, uh?
That'd be page one oh one is the general fund.
Oh, it's before. I, I got mixed up in all of that, um, opioid settlement stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
And I, and I actually missed the page one hundred and two. There's a little bit, there's a little bit more adjustments down there, down through there as far as revenues are concerned. And like I said, those are just kind of the general balancing and things of that nature, so we, we've done really well from a revenue standpoint this year, and I think we're, we're good to go.
You know, entertain a motion to accept.
I move to accept.
Second.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis. Okay, motion carries. Next, the, you have, um, Kroger and Kroger and Mylan opioid settlement agreement approvals. Brian, did you want to speak about that?
Just a general thing that this is the same stuff that's been coming down the pike at us in the last year and a half, and we just kind of got to sign the papers and to get in the boat with, with getting whatever money that's eventually going to come out of all this.
You have any idea if we've received any of that funds yet?
I'm not aware of receiving any of it.
Okay.
I'll investigate, I can investigate that. I can call the.
Yeah.
Municipalities across the state are receiving those.
Yeah.
We'll end up with ten bucks.
Yeah, no, 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 we're counting on it, but I just didn't want to slide through into the general fund for ten dollars, right? And you say, oh, this is Treasury transfer.
Right.
I realized what it was. Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the Kroger opioid settlement. Shouldn't we have to bill them item by item?
Probably can. Okay.
So my motion is to accept the Kroger opioid settlement agreement.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second. There you go, Randy. I second your motion.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion.
We'll speak about it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, is there a motion to approve the Mylan opioid settlement agreement?
I propose a motion to accept the Mylan opioid settlement agreement.
I'll second.
It's been moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And as a follow-up to that, was anyone able to attend the Drug Task Force meeting that Mayor Jerry Marco was putting together? It was on the thirtieth of May. I sent an email to everybody and asked.
I guess the city attorney asked you.
The city attorney did not attend.
Did anyone from the county attend, Sherry?
Not that, to my knowledge, I'd have to check the calendars to see.
Okay, well.
It was it's kind of, um, last minute, too.
Yeah, it really was, and it was around the holiday. That's okay. Um, I can't recall the date of the next one. I think it's the end of this month. It's on my calendar. And we'll talk and hopefully somebody from the county can, can go to that. Okay, next neighborhood watch picnic funding request. Uh, request for two fifty to three hundred dollars.
This is something we do every year. Wasn't it, was it four hundred last year or was it the same amount?
I thought it was two fifty.
I think it was two fifty last year.
So do you want us to make the motion up to two fifty or three hundred? The price of everything has gone up.
My general feeling was, I think last year we just cut them a check and somebody cashed it. I don't know if Neighborhood Watch has a bank account or.
Think they do.
Okay, and that's not alleging anything there, but I think maybe a cleaner process for the city would be to say something to the effect of, we'll reimburse you up to three hundred dollars and bring your receipts in and we'll take those receipts and cut you a check from whatever those real costs are. And she may have.
I'm pretty sure that she did.
Okay.
Yeah, because she keeps track of everything.
That's fine. I just, and it's part of tomato, tomato, really, at the end of the day with this amount of money, but.
Right, I'll move to approve up to three hundred dollars for the Weston Neighborhood Watch picnic funding up to.
Okay. Reimbursable, I guess, at that point, right?
There are second.
I'll say it.
It's been moved in second to um, provide to the Neighborhood Watch picnic, uh, up to three hundred dollars in re- reimbursable funding.
That's how they did it last year, right? It was reimbursed.
In favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, Stormwater General Fund transfer for jackhammer purchase.
This, I didn't know how to approach this, so that's why I stuck it on here this way. What is being proposed is the sanitary board has a piece of machinery that they'd like to get a jackhammer for, and there's times where we'd like to use the jackhammer as well. And what I'm proposing, I guess at this point, is to split that cost three ways between the three funds. General Fund, Stormwater Fund, and Sanitary, uh, revenues, which are three separate, uh, financial pies there. And so I think the, the approximate cost of the jackhammer was around nine thousand dollars, right, Dean? It might even be in the packet, I think.
Ninety-three forty-one.
Okay, and so I guess what I'm asking for, not a guess, I am asking council to approve splitting of that by three in three different ways. And so essentially, we'd make a transfer or authorize D to make a transfer from Stormwater Fund, I guess, to Sewer Fund. And then from, we'd cut a check from the General Fund into, to, to Sanitary Board to, to put into their sewer revenue fund. Because I think the intention is, is to refinance their, um, machine and include that piece of equipment on their financing of their current machine, and then that would just, if we need to use the jackhammer, be understood that we paid a portion of that, and that, that could be shared amongst the three departments, or three uses, three services.
You have any comments, Steve? Will you be using it?
Through canals, things like that down there.
Yeah, I guess we need to wait on Councilwoman Rogers.
She is.
That's okay. Um, we're looking at, uh, the purchase, approval for purchase of the jackhammer with with the cost to be split three ways, and the total cost is ninety-three forty-one. And I am presently entertaining a motion to approve that purchase.
Let's hold on, we're trying to make a, we're trying to figure out the actual number. So, so we can.
I thought I.
Have it down.
Looked at it.
Isn't it ninety-three forty-one?
That's what we want to make sure. He, he thought he had a different number in his, his mind.
It's on, okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay. What page was that on?
Uh.
One sixty.
Got one sixty-two here. One sixty-one. I was just looking at it, I think. The total's nine thousand three hundred and forty-one. There it is. Yes, I just, thank you. I'll move to approve the purchase for nine thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and zero cents.
Okay, it's been moved and second, discussion? Voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen? Councilman Herb Curtis. Motion carries. Next, road strip and machine purchase, ten thousand dollars ARPA funding. Is this something that's in the coming up year's budget? Did we do that already?
I thought it was curb painting. Is this different?
It does. It's, you can adjust the sprayer to paint curbs as well, but this will also help you do lines like for parking, your parking lines and stop bars. Things of that nature on the roads, crosswalks.
Is this similar to what they purchased in Buchanan?
I don't know what they've purchased in Buchanan.
They purchased it in Buchanan, but like he said, this, this would be your angle. It'll do your top and your side. What we're looking at, and then like, you know, when you come up on your intersection, you've got your angles on there. So people don't park on there. It'll also do the flat screen, right?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. And I, I gave you guys a couple quotes. Pittsburgh Spray Company was really the, when I started looking in these main suppliers, there was a Titan, uh, paint sprayer, and there was a Greco. Um, and I've kind of gone back and forth with them. The quote is not for fourteen thousand dollars. They gave me two different quotes on the Titan via email there. These are the two prices, and I think we'll want to buy some different, um, modifications to the unit, and so that's why I'm requesting up to ten thousand dollars ARPA funds to pay for that line striper. Um, but the, there's two different models there. One was sixty-one hundred dollars and fifty, oh, sixty-one fifty-nine. And then there was a second one that had two spray nozzles for seventy-nine seventy-nine. And I think the two spray nozzles, we talked about that a little bit, but more I thought about it, if you want to do stop bars and crosswalk bars, it'd be nice to have the two spray nozzles so you can do those all at the same time. So.
Oh, we can have crosswalks?
Yeah. Or at least painted ones. Your attention.
Only on our streets.
Yes. Yes. I'll move to approve up to ten thousand dollars of ARPA funding for the paint machine.
There are second? It's been moved and second, any discussion? Voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen? Councilman Herb Curtis. Motion carries. Next, purchasing of equipment for fire department.
I just gave you the list. I'm able to, the bunch of the guys, this is stuff we can sit down and get the two new trucks, they'll be coming hopefully in the next month, and this is equipment we just need to update. And this is money that's in my budget still that I haven't spent. I was pretty stringent with my budget.
Yeah.
I think. That's still only half of what I've got left, so.
And these are for the jaws of life, right?
Right, for the, well, some new hose for the trucks, like stuff that we can use for rescue equipment, update our pumps or cutters and stuff like that.
Yeah. So we're asking for these funds to be, for Jimmy to be allowed to purchase this equipment from his general fund budget. Um, fully in support of that.
Like I said, it's nothing extra in my budget. It's actually just stuff that I've had left. I didn't spend, so. That's still only about half of what I have left.
I'll move, uh, to purchasing the equipment for the fire department. My second.
It's been moved and second, discussion? Voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries. Next. Well, at awarding of asphalt paving of city streets.
Clark, I think we only received one bid, right? We received two, but the second one was not, it was an optimal attachment, so we weren't allowed to accept it. And so our only bid is, um, Jeff Allen at a hundred and thirty-five dollars per ton.
I have a question, just in general terms, for my information. Comparison last year to this year on the line of bids.
As far as how much? As far as like, have they increased or decreased?
Hard work, handwork and the milling. Just from memory, I'm just, it's nothing to do with the end of the book. I'm just curious from last year to this year, how much it went up.
I think.
The ton, tonnage on the asphalt. We started out one thirteen last year. We got a twenty-five dollar increase by the time we got ready to pay. So that brought that up to one thirty.
One thirty-eight.
So we're, we're on the same, about the same page as what we were paying last year. One thirty-seven, I think we're one thirty-seven seventy-five a ton, right?
Milling went up significantly, didn't it?
Milling went up a little bit, but as we speak with these streets that we have here, there's not company on the lot of milling there. I think it's basically on one street. But they did ask a question about, uh, where we're going to pay them for the milling, where we had to, uh, lay over into the state. Property, which they will be paying that milling cost. It's what night must.
Well, and I'll just make the caveat with our recommendation. Let us confirm, I'm looking at the bid sheet here, and I said estimated two thousand tons, and we were actually estimating that we had about twelve hundred tons this year. That was a typo, my point. So I just want to make sure that they're fine with that quantity. Shouldn't matter a whole lot, but I'll just, before we sign on the dotted line, let's make sure they're not assuming that they're going to get two thousand tons of work. That's where we'll end up. Every street, okay.
So they know what's there.
Okay.
Okay. So entertain a motion to award the, uh, paving of city streets to JF Allen.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes, yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
I know.
Carries. Next, surplus bids for city equipment.
That does get included. Okay, so you.
Missed to the end.
Yeah, as far as, there wasn't like a bid sheet or anything like that. See, looks like Shonda Hicks was our high bidder on the two thousand six Chevy Silverado. The seventy-six case backhoe and the Marathon electric air compressor and our miscellaneous lot. And then who else do we have there? Keith was for the fire truck. I'm missing a piece of equipment there. And, and then Mr. Settle bid on the roller.
Well, you've got Gary Weaver. Was that a yes?
Gary Weaver got the, the international crack.
Tracker, yeah.
You want them all separate motions or just approve them all?
I think just approve the high bids and let's move on. Yeah.
I'll move to approve the high bids.
No, second.
Hey, it's been moved in second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we're down to reports of city council. Just wanted the, everybody to know that tomorrow Nate and I are going to Sutton Gasway. Meet with the elected officials there. Um, Nate did submit the formal grant application for the congressional earmark funding. And I don't know if you saw that we got an email back this afternoon. They need a few little more pieces of information. And I think we'll be set for that to get started on the Riverfront Park project. And finally, I'd like to say thank you again, Randy, for your service and your friendship. And I look forward to hearing your concerns and opinions about city government off of Facebook and in person.
All it is, is a method to project. The action has to be taken at hand.
I'd like a personal appearance. Thank you. And we'll move on to word one.
It's just a median.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Also, our audience, thank you so much for being so concerned and involved about our community and helping us to make our community a better place to live. I also enjoyed your, your talk, our special guests. I, I thank you for taking the time and also thank you for your dedication to our communities. Um, like to thank the employees as well. I know that we couldn't make this happen if it weren't for you. Some special dates this weekend, the Carp Festival. Let's not miss that. Um, it looks like a lot of fun, a lot of numerous activities. I'm particularly excited about the plant swap. Um, I love plant swaps and, uh, and also the ribbon cutting at the library for the Walk This Way storyboards. Um, city election, early voting is currently taking place at the city building. Don't forget to vote. Last day, well, actually, election day is June thirteenth. Then I would like to remind everyone of our Independence Day festivities, July first, with the parade, coronation of the Flame Queen, and a celebration, which is the street fair and fireworks. Um, we have some awesome music lined up for that. And also don't forget the summer music concert.
Thank you.
Randy, I'd like to thank you for, um, I've enjoyed working with you. I'm sad to see you leave.
It's not over.
We're still gonna argue, aren't we? And thank you for your time and dedication. Okay. Been a pleasure. Thanks. That's all I have.
All right. Well, I jotted down a few notes. And the broken penmanship that I use. I hated to see these pieces of paper go to complete waste. With the Weston Municipal Building Painting Contracted being addressed. So I didn't want to see the paper being completely wasted. So I wrote my notes on the back of it. And I said, uh, before I go too deep into what I have to say, I just want to stress that the respect and the commitment and the professional approach that everybody has taken with their job, all you people, all you people, all the people that participate in the meetings, all the workers that work for all you people. I want you all to, I want you to tell them that I appreciate the professionalism that they all exhibited. And with that, I go to this. I feel that we as a body have began cycling back to elected officials of the olden times. Since the beginning, I have warned of council stepping out of the role that this form of municipal governance was intended and designed. My belief is that the role of the elected in the mayor manager form of government is, one, interact with the constituents. Two, bring the desires to the administrators. And three, vote on the plan brought forth by the administrators. After the debate and discussion period to refine it, period. That's all further that's counsel. That's all, that's all our responsibility is. We, we don't go any further. We're, we're not administrators. And I, I think at times we've stepped out of that role a lot. So that's one of the problems that I've had with it. That has nothing to do with me. I got seven years in this. I spent, I worked harder the first three years than I have the last four, trying to get to this point that we're all at, which has been successful. And I said, you know, if something, something don't jive with you in this debate process, as being an elected official, then, then, then you need to take a, an approach to hiring different administrators if you can't come to a resolution, but not try to dictate how the ones you have work. You have to have confidence in them and you have to give them the confidence, the vote of, that they are doing what you're asking. And, uh, if, if you're not happy with the way things are done as far as money, you need to be better at budget prep and negotiating. And not try to change things as you go through the process. I know there needs to be revisions, but you should look into the things that you're hoping for, for your constituents in the budget process, because that's what dictates what we do. And I said, I, I see we've, I think we've slowly drifted from the one factor that I cite from drifting from all this is, is all the free things that we've gotten through this insane COVID funding. We submitted, I'm thinking, seven thousand dollars in bills. We get eight, one point eight million. And you got to think about every community in the United States, every county level government, almost all nonprofits, almost all public service. Everybody got funded in that ridiculous manner. And you think that there's not something attached to that, you're crazy. And I, I tried to share that. Now, I know y'all, I don't think I'm crazy for wanting to turn down one point eight million dollars, because look at all the good things that's done for us. But there's something out there waiting on us, I'm afraid. Something out there waiting on us. Just like in the, the big cities now. All these commercial rental properties and all the office buildings, fifty, fifty-three percent vacancy. They got forty-seven percent of their office buildings filled. You, you know what they're doing? Federal government's coming in, taking these buildings and turning them into public housing. Nothing you can do about it because you signed on to agree to do that. So that, that's the things that concern me with this free money. I said, we've been like drunken sailors and entitled spouses. We feasted on freebies and it has divided us in many ways in regards to spending this money. I don't think it's destroyed anything. I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think it's got to that point, but it has divided us at times and we've spent a lot of time ragging back and forth over things that we wouldn't have had if we'd had all the, I mean, it's good to have the money. I'm not saying it's not, but there was prices to pay for it. So then, before we begin in this area, I just want to stress that, that nothing going forward, do I believe, has any personal component to it. But it's an indicator of the body as a whole, is how it's grown. Example being three and a half years ago, there was a moment frozen in time. And it occurred when a previously elected brought a motion to the floor, which involved limited interaction and questioning of a past administrator, which was very well justified. That motion went without a second, and you could have heard a pin drop in that room for ten minutes. You'd have had to been there. You wasn't there, you wasn't there, but us four was and and us not getting a second on that motion to limit your ability to question him was, was a game changer. This was when the line was drawn in the sand, and that was the moment we began fixing what ailed the city. Three and a half years later, this event happened a couple more times without much fanfare, but one of them was nothing much. The second one I felt was, was pretty big. It'll, it, it still can be fixed, so. But this was in, in regards to two motions that I made. And remember, I don't take any of this personally because of the big picture. The issue is, you know, where we're headed with everything. And the minority in the recent not second motion wanted to be heard at the table, which was me, and the majority throttled the discussion and vote by not offering a second. And the issues, I think, I'm not even sure, but I think the issues was the land reuse management and the, uh, second time around on the cemetery vote on the bid. And the in this, in the, um, the vast contrast in this situation from three and a half years ago, was that it was a minority wanted to limit discussion that was needed. And the majority didn't second it. So that, that was the difference in the whole, two different seconds was one was, I was wanting to create discussion and that one back then, they was wanting to limit discussion. So there's a lot of difference in, in seconding things and things like that. And like I said, it, I, you know, nothing's personal to me. But I just, I'm just trying to help moving forward if you see how people. Whenever things don't go forward like that and you don't get to have the opportunity to discuss or have a second vote on something. And you're trying to open discussion rather than limit discussion, you should consider that. I think almost everything deserves a second being brought forward so that people can voice their opinions and, and move forward. And I said, that being said, I respect and admire everyone in the ongoing process for the work put in. And stay focused on the limits and the duties that we're, that are placed on you in whatever capacity you serve. We've accomplished great things and thanks for the experience. And I have one final concern. I spent three years working to get to this seat. And everybody in town, they was in Charleston trying to stop me. They was, I mean, they were everywhere. State Secretary of State, everybody was out. You can't do it. You aren't going to get. Well, I knew what was going on way better when I got in than the people that left. And I, I have concerns because not one person seeking my seat has reached out to speak with me. I haven't seen him at any meetings. And that concerns me. So I hope that they come in and, and do what they can to catch up. I've challenged them, I guess, publicly, right? That's, that's what I do. I hope they do well, though. I think they'll have a, they've got a good group to work with. They need to come in and, and get, getting after it. Whichever one does win. Like I said, I don't even know who's running, basically.
Thank you very.
So that's it.
Thank you. Word four. Hey, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.